Thank you. Bow with me. Father, we're so grateful for the opportunity to be here today together to lead and to serve. We pray for every child in Alabama today, every teacher in Alabama, every school leader. We pray for your provision and protection over each one of them. We lift up the Manning family today, Lord, as they have suffered loss. And we just ask that you be close to them during this difficult time. Be with each of our presenters today, Lord. We pray for them, such talented people. We pray, Father, for discernment as a board and help us to be at our very, very best today on behalf of the children that we serve and families. It's in Jesus' name that I pray.
Thank you, Ms. West. At this time, we'll have the presenters for the resolution for the adoption of library guidance to come forward.
I will, I will. I will introduce them, but fairly because I just walked in and don't really know these ladies that well. Their work's really, really good. I don't know if we have any of our folks apologize for coming in late. Who are we? Shaun. There he is. So, so do y'all want to come up also? Or y'all just hang out? Y'all just hang out right there in case there's any questions while they won't make it so crowded. Let me so introduce y'all know Shaun Stevens, Kristi.
Kristen Dillard.
Kristen Dillard, I'm sorry, Kristen, who worked on this with our library committee, leads library work for us. And of course, Dr. Melissa Shields, who leads all that work and thousands more things she does for us every day. And these are two of our local librarians. And I have your names. Since I've already messed up Kristen's name, I'm going to let y'all introduce yourselves and tell where you're from while they're pulling that up. While they're pulling up PowerPoint, let me remind y'all where we are. I think everybody knows Ms. Manning worked with this committee. She is, of course, a librarian herself. She was not able to come today because of a death in her husband's family. And I think Dr. Chester has some more information from her on that. We, y'all know this work was started a few years ago. We sidelined the work. We, Ms. Manning asked if we would bring it back in 2024. And so we were able, y'all all helped us find a good set of librarians who have now a new document in front of you. And so I'll turn it over to these ladies. What I would remind you in the adoption process is that this is a, it is standards, library standards. It's a little different, though, than our course of studies, which they'll be, we'll be doing later this morning. Because it's not, we do library standards, but it's not called out in the code of Alabama like the courses of study are. So it's a little bit closer, more truncated process. But these would be the standards that we would hold librarians and libraries to across the state when we do comprehensive monitoring. The current document is really old. I think it's more than 20 years old. And so that's one of the things that I know when Ms. Manning brought it back to my attention and she said, Dr. Mackey, will you just open the document, look at the pictures and tell me if you got this today? So, so she made her point. So anyway, thank y'all very much for doing the work and all of your team for pulling together to get us a new document to look at. And so I'll turn it over to y'all. Will y'all introduce yourselves and where you're from? And then if you need anything, let us know.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. We are so glad to be here today. My name is Jennifer Northrup. I'm an education specialist and a National War Certified Teacher in Library Media. And I am from Gwinnett Elementary School in Hoover, Alabama.
And I am Catherine Baxter, Education Specialist in Media Laboratory Information Sciences. I teach at Martin Luther King Junior Elementary School in Tuscaloosa, Alabama. As Dr. Mackey was saying, the last time our handbook was written was in 2008. These pictures show, are exactly from the handbook, and they show what libraries at the time looked like. But thankfully, times have changed. The images there before you now represent to libraries that Alabama libraries and what they should look like today, a place of learning for all. An updated manual is necessary to keep up with the changes in our spaces and in literacy engagement and learning.
And as Dr. Mackey mentioned, we are here to present the refined version of the updated Alabama guidelines for exemplary school libraries. We are grateful for the work of all the educators and school librarians from the state on this document. The task force that was pulled together, I think my slide may be a little different there, but we will go on to the next one. There we go. All right, so school librarians are instructional partners, literacy champions, and actively work to create lifelong learners and readers. This document is important because it helps to find exemplary school libraries and library programs, and it gives the framework for every school library in the state of Alabama to become an exemplary library. And you'll see some of that as we move forward. We're very proud of the rubrics in this document to determine exemplary libraries.
All right, so what do exemplary, exemplary school library programs look like? They are led by certified librarians. The state of Alabama is one of the very few states that require certified librarians in every school. And we are so like, that's a bracket right for us. Those certified school librarians make sure that our learners are prepared for life after secondary school, whether that be college, whether that be the workforce, or whether that be our military. We want to build critical thinkers. We want to build people who are learners and who are literacy, literate and lost my train of thought. Who love literacy, you know? The more you read, the more you grow, the better you are. So we want to make sure that our students at every level, pre-K through 12th grade, have the ability to do that in an exemplary library program. So how do we ensure that these programs are exemplary? This updated document embeds several rubrics to focus on programming growth. They assist schools to develop exemplary school library programs and recognize that exemplary programs, that exemplary programs lead to more learning. This is one of the rubrics we have in our document. It shows developing, accomplishing exemplary. Libraries see where they are, what work they need to do in those different areas, and it leads their growth. We're not trying to take anything away from, you know, different libraries doing their own thing. That is completely not us. What we want to do is show how you can do your thing and still be exemplary status.
And Alabama educators and school librarians created all the rubrics that you see in this document, and we're very, we're very thankful for this. All right, another thing we have in this document are learner outcomes. And the task force realizes a need for these defined learner outcomes to provide school librarians with expectations by grade bands to ensure all learners receive instruction throughout their scholastic careers, to again foster students to become lifelong readers and learners. And these outcomes aid in designing dynamic instructional tasks that ensure all students actively participate in becoming information literate. They build a solid foundation for cross-curricular instruction to maximize student achievement and to aid in collaborative planning. And they show that an exemplary school library program empowers students to learn, develop, and apply skills in the areas of library use, information literacy, literature appreciation, and digital citizenship. And this is again, one example of learner outcomes that you've seen throughout the document.
This last, our last slide is a quote from the 2023-2034 Alabama Superintendent of the Year, who hails from my district? I may be a little biased. You know, literacy really became our focus in our system. Dr. Daria insisted that our libraries be the kind of libraries that our students could learn from. It took, you know, some library showing him a book that first, that was in their library when they first got there from 1920 something. He's like, what? Like, yes, our students don't want to read this. They want to read other things. So he immediately went in with the focus of, we've got to improve our libraries. He's made it so that everyone in our system knows that libraries and librarians are important and that the work we do help this continue, will help with the success of our students and their education and their graduation. So we've been doing the thing in TCS that has been amazing. And I would love that other systems could feel the importance and the growth and the libraries and librarians matter like what we do.
Dr. Chester, do you want to provide another Ms. Manning since I probably got it? And I don't know if there are any questions?
I was, yeah.
Yes.
Do we have any questions before I read her comments?
And one thing I would like to just underscore from the work of these librarians that were on this committee and the two that are in front of you, that these, these are kind of the standards of programs, library programs, much like counseling programs. It's not just the individual or academic type standards, as Dr. Mackey had said. These are program standards. And if we really want our schools that are led by certified, highly qualified, very educated school librarians that are versed in everything, like the individuals that came together to create this document, this was Alabama educators, administrators, and school librarians from across the state, that this will push us into being what Dr. Daria has done for Tuscaloosa City, many other schools superintendents have done as well, is really emphasize that literacy is throughout the school building. It is more than the responsibility of a reading teacher, that this truly underscores that if we want our kids to be, I mean, we're 24 years into the 21st century. If we want them to be 21st century students, if we want them to be educated and to move beyond graduation, literacy, we all know, is a key component of that. And the library has such an important part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? We just want to thank you for your commitment and dedication. It's evident in what you presented. Marie Manning was just so upset that she could not be here today. I know she worked alongside you guys with this effort, but she texts me a message that she wanted to say. I'm sorry I'm unable to be at the meeting and work session. I know each of you understand my desire to see the library standards passed. Each of you recommended a member for the committee from your district, and you really picked some rock stars. To Jennifer North, thank you. Your knowledge and vision is exemplary. Thank you, Kat, for your exuberant participation and knowledge on this committee. To each board member, Dr. Mackey, and staff members who assisted, thank you. The document being presented today will assist students in providing not just good libraries for our students in Alabama, but exemplary programs that will assist students on their journey as lifelong learners. This document provides ways to keep the library in the middle of literacy and learning. We have worked hard to provide standards that meet the policy requirements of all subjects and fields of study for our students. If you find an area that you believe is not presented fairly, please let us know. I look forward to our next meeting when these standards can be presented for adoption. Again, thank you, Jennifer and Kat.
And I'd just like to say, I like the layout. You know, you start with the rubric you shared with us and how it looks at developing, accomplishing, exemplary, and then the learner outcomes dealing with the grade bands. So it's obvious that you all have done great work. And I know all superintendents are doing great things, but I'm partial also because I represent two of Tuscaloosa. So keep up the good work. I do know that it's gone beyond the school libraries with literacy because class libraries, that has been a focus of his. And I've been working with them on our project with class libraries now for about the four years, last four years.
I do think it's important to note, I know in District Two, I've had quite a few questions over the last couple of years. And I've been quick to point out that school libraries are different than public libraries. And they have a very different set of standards and guidelines in that we do invite parent participation in the K-12 environment, and we actually encourage that as we want our parents to be involved in what their children are reading and learning in our, in our school libraries. So I just want to note for the record, I have no idea if Chris is here today, but, but I would like that to be differentiated because the committee that met on libraries at the state level is a totally different body than we have here today. And I do appreciate your work.
Thank you so much.
I too want to say thank you.
Yes.
Of course, I have excellent representation from my district. Mine is the best. But I appreciate all of your work. And I also have had, at the very beginning stages, when we had a lot of the public library controversies, I had a lot of calls and questions. And my comment was, well, we have a process in place where you can question it and just go directly to your local, and then I would give them all of the instructions. And, and they would always call back and say, well, not always, but most of the time call back and say, thank you. And they appreciate your work and they realize that there is a distinction and your mission is very different. Your ages that you reach are very specific in almost every single case. And so I do appreciate your work on this committee. And yes, I was around back in the day. And of course, there were parts of that that actually where they referred to different groups, things that those groups are doing now are very, or positions they have taken are very different from what they were at that time. And so I, I understand what you had to sift through to some extent.
But at that time, they were excellent.
Well, I don't know if they were excellent. Because I wasn't part of those associations. I was just taking, you know, I was just being trusting at that time. But, and they, they did seem, the committee actually was very diligent in their work. But the fact is that you have also been very diligent. I did read through in preparation for this meeting and I do, I know you spent a lot of time and probably made some edits along the way and then made some more. But you are truly appreciated.
And we won't let them wait another 20 years. Thank you. Hopefully, they'll still be around in 20 years.
Okay, thank you kindly.
Thank you all so much. So do we have the arts team with us?
Are you ready to go?
They can come forward.
Grab some chairs and come on up.
Dr. Quentin Lee, Superintendent of Tuscaloosa City Schools, chaired this committee for us, and thank you, Dr. Lee, for doing the work. Of course, Andy Meadows, y'all know Andy sitting right behind him there. Andy is our department staff that works with this. As I pull up this PowerPoint up, again, I'll just kind of remind the board members and the public, two big courses of study this year, the arts, and then we'll have social studies later. How we're going to organize, everybody out there, is social studies will come after lunch. So we're going to, we're going to hopefully finish arts and then come back and do social studies after lunch and complete the rest of the agenda. They've been meeting for many, many months, almost a year. And this will complete the cycle. I hope everybody understands, if you think back, we started, you know, almost seven years ago when I started superintendent, we started with math and career, and career tech. And we've now rewritten all 16 career tech clusters. We have done all the core subjects. And today, if, or this next month, you'll have the opportunity to finish social studies and arts, in which case we will have done all of the core subjects, all of the career tech rewrite, library standards. And there are just a few things left out there that we'll be working on in the next couple of years. But, but pretty much you as a board have rewritten the entire course of study in every subject for the whole state. And so, you know, and as Ms. Ziegler just pointed out, there's always, we start over then at some point. We do have digital literacy coming up. I know pretty soon we've got to do that again because that's another one, digital literacy just, even though it was only done, I think, eight years ago, it's changed so much in that time. But today, we're going to look at arts and social studies. Arts before lunch, social studies afterward. Again, we always ask a superintendent to chair these committees. By ask, I mean twist arms, beg, Joel, whatever it takes, because they take this on in addition to, of course, being superintendent of the district. And Dr. Lee, I want to turn it over to you and let you go through our presentation.
Yes, sir. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you all for this opportunity. Dr. Mackey, thank you for your leadership for Alabama. I'm Dr. Quentin Lee, the Superintendent of Tuscaloosa City Schools, but I stand today not just as superintendent, but an advocate for fine arts. I am a product of fine arts. I have discovered the love of music in, in high school and was able to be in a high school band at Scottsboro High School as part of the band and received a band scholarship and went on to Alabama A and M University and was an amazing opportunity. Loved it so much, I even became a band director. And so without the love of music, I wouldn't stand before you today as superintendent because through music, I understood that there was a greater calling on my life, and that was definitely in education. So we're here to talk about the course of study for 2024 with fine arts. And let me tell you, this has been an absolute joy to be able to create with my fellow friends now, because we've been together for a year. But it's been an awesome opportunity. So this first map that you'll see represents all of the representatives that were on this committee from the state. We are arts people, so we definitely want to make sure that we color code it. So each star is represented by the area that they focused on. I was a little special. I got my own star, it's orange. But this was a great opportunity to show that we took, took everyone's opinion from across the state with our representatives, and we created this document that you will see in just a moment. This is some of the committee members that we have that served. Oh, this is not clicking nowhere. But this is some of our course of study committee. That's, that's not everyone, but that's a great percentage of the people that really worked on this information that you see today. So let's jump right into it. I'm going to use errors. All right, so what you see is that we were able to redesign our logo. So Alabama's at the center of the lens. We, because we're in the fine arts, we decided to make this a camera lens. So Alabama's at the center of the lens, and it represents the state's central focus on the arts. And each of the arts disciplines is brought into focus by artistic processes, anchor standards, process components, and enduring understandings. Represented by focusing the rings around the lens. When the rings are adjusted, the disciplines share light and space with each other, erasing the boundaries between them, yet still maintaining their own distinct identities, vivid and strong. So starting with our rings, we have artistic process, which is our cognitive and physical actions by which art, learning and making are realized. And they are shared with all five disciplines. Our anchor standards describe the general knowledge and skill that teachers expect students to demonstrate throughout their education in the arts. And these anchor standards are parallel across arts discipline and grade levels and serve as a tangible educational expression of artist's literacy. With our process components, they are the actions artists carry out as they complete each artistic process. And it's the student's ability to carry out these operational verbs and empowers them to work through artistic process independently. And then we have their enduring understandings. These focus on what are often called the, the big ideas. They refer to the core ideas and principles that students should grasp deeply and apply beyond the classroom. They are key concepts that hold lasting value and are transferable across various contexts. They can take this learning and apply it to new situations, foster a lifelong ability to make connection and solve problems through the arts. This approach emphasizes understanding over memorizing and encouraging critical thinking and creativity. So the bottom line is that we want to use arts to help our Alabama bright scholars become critical thinkers and problem solver, so that they can continue to become the next leaders in Alabama. And our performance standards are the discipline-specific, which dance, media arts, music, visual arts, and theater, our grade-by-grade articulations of student achievement. As such, the performance standards translate the anchor standards into specific measurable learning goals. Our performance standards focus on the development of key artistic processes such as creating, performing, and responding, rather than emphasizing a final product. These standards encourage students to engage deeply with the creative process, exploring, refining, and expressing artistic ideas. This approach prioritizes critical thinking, problem solving, and emotional expression over the outcome of the final artwork itself. So we had several goals. And that was to express and nurture creativity, critical thinking, and emotional expression by providing our students with an opportunity to develop essential life skills such as decision-making, collaboration, and communication, which are in high demand in the workforce. Arts education also enhances cultural awareness, fosters personal growth, and supports academic performance by offering an alternative way for students to engage with course subjects such as literacy, math, science. Additionally, it helps build confidence, self-esteem, and a sense of accomplishment, contributing to both personal fulfillment and preparation for a future career. Alabama K-12 Arts Education Program is guided by a unified goal, to cultivate arts literacy that enlightens, inspires, and nurtures creative and innovative thinking in every student throughout this state. Arts literacy is essential for ensuring that students are well-prepared for both college and career paths. So a few more of our goals is that arts literacy was the knowledge and understanding required to participate in the arts. Influencing the language of the arts is the ability to create, perform, produce, present, respond, and connect through symbolic and metaphorical forms that are unique to the arts. Education aimed at arts literacy involves developing skills to critique, analyze, and communicate about the art, fostering creativity, and expanding the ability to understand and appreciate cultural and historical contexts. Arts literacy enables individuals to make informed decisions about the art and its role in society, and definitely supports their ability to express themselves through artistic means. The arts offer powerful opportunities for teaching, motivating, and teaching all students, and we know that Alabama is definitely strong in the arts with our many artists that we have across the state. School systems are strongly encouraged to make the arts accessible to all students in all grades. And this course of study reflects a cohesive, vertically and horizontally aligned system that allows for both common progressions across the discipline and specificity within each discipline, thereby, thereby establishing the appropriate level of breadth and depth required for college and career arts. So what's new? We have new levels that we have from proficiency levels in all disciplines. Middle school now has three levels, and high school has four. We've also added developmentally appropriate scaffolding by grade levels that would best serve the students that we have in our schools. So this time, I'm going to turn it over to our first discipline, which will be dance with my friend Celeste.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Celeste Crawford. I am the president of the Alabama Dance Educators Association, as well as a dance teacher for the only high school dance program in Tuscaloosa City School District. I am also the proud mom of five amazing kids who have benefited and are benefiting from dance education, oh, arts education, excuse me. My two oldest kids have attended two different ASU's, Alcorn State University and Alabama State University, both on full scholarships. I have a freshman who is currently playing the trombone in high school, a fifth grader who started playing the trumpet three weeks ago. And the newest addition to our family is 19 months, and he can already buzz on a mouthpiece. I am also the proud of arts education, specifically dance education, from right here in Montgomery, Alabama. I attended Baldwin Arts and Academic Junior High back then in Brooklyn City, Washington, Magna High School. So this is definitely a full circle moment for me. So I'm so thankful and proud to be a part of this community and to present to you guys today. Next slide, dance literacy. All right, so what's new with dance? Dance literacy, we define dance literacy as the ability to embody, create, analyze, interpret, and develop a deep understanding of dance as it relates to various personal experiences, various cultures, and historical contexts. It is integral to a dance's comprehensive education encompassing not just technical and physical skills, but also the capacity to create, communicate, connect, interpret, dance with precision and clarity. Dance literacy students can interpret and analyze dance works, create their own choreographic works from their own ideas, apply their dance knowledge and skills across different artistic disciplines and academic subjects, work individually and collaboratively to enrich their overall educational experience. All right, so what's new with dance? What's new with dance standards? So as Dr. Lee said, we are offering a half-credit course, which we are calling Dance Exploration. This is an active class, active standards, not passive. So students that participate in this half-credit course will actually have to physically participate, realize these standards in real time. We have also added an additional level at the high school level. Instead of having three, as we've had in the previous years, we now have four levels at high school and three levels at the middle school. So the biggest addition to the dance standards this year, we incorporated dance themes. The committee that we have, we were looking at the past standards and realized that there were some missing pieces when we talk about the very basic concepts that are needed for dance education. So to ensure that regardless of where a student enters into dance education, whether they enter in at the high school level or enter in at the middle school. whether they enter in at the high school level or enter in at the middle school level, that they receive the basic concepts that they need. So, each of our standards is attached to a concept that they can receive either from pre-K or a high school, making sure that there's a streamline, make sure they get that information that they need to be successful if they choose to dance professionally or go into the college space. Any questions? Alright, thank you guys. At this time, I will turn it over to media arts.
I'm just trying to make it full screen. It'll turn into a slideshow. I can't reach that from here, though. Can you even? I'm trying to help. Trying to, if they'll make it full screen, it'll actually. It'll turn it into a slideshow. All you have to do is click. It's alright. Can you get it full screen?
There you go.
Thank you.
There you go.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Beth Beckus. I am the media arts teacher at Austin High School in Cedar, Alabama. I am proud to be a media arts teacher and one of the first state to adopt state media arts standards. My child graduated from Austin High School after taking four years of media arts, and they're currently at UAAH, about to graduate with an arts degree and the plan on continuing at the Alabama Center for the Arts to get their MFA in Integrative Design. So, we have a strong interest in media arts in my family. So, media arts is a project-based discipline focused on human communication through electronic media. This includes film, photography, video, audio, digital arts, and interactive media such as video games and virtual reality spaces. Students creatively employ elements such as space, time, light, motion, color, and sound to articulate their perspectives, emotions, and ideas. Through critical analysis, students learn to interpret and evaluate media within aesthetic, cultural, historic, and personal contexts. Media arts literacy is crucial in our digital age. As digital consumption and creation are prevalent in both personal and professional environments, understanding how to create, produce, and interpret digital content becomes increasingly important. Also, this industry is expected to surpass one trillion in revenue in 2024, and this leads to abundant job opportunities for our students. Because media arts encompasses a variety of courses, the standards are written to ensure that students in all of these courses can achieve proficiency in artistic processes of creating, producing, responding, and connecting. So, the same standards will apply whether the course is interactive game design or sequential images or digital sound design or any other media arts course. So, what's new? We still have eighteen standards crafted to ensure a comprehensive media arts education while meeting the needs of students taking a wide variety of courses. We added an additional high school level so that we have more levels in grades nine through twelve. We also have the half-credit general media arts course. This uses a designated set of performance standards to ensure that all eleven anchor standards are met. This course would be beneficial for any student to increase their digital literacy. That's all I have. Very good. Thank you for your time.
Would you say that this course that you've added at the high school level is where an entry-level college course might be for base students?
The entry-level, the half-credit course is designed to kind of give an overview. It's not specifically like a not like a college. It's more like a survey. But it could still be applied whether the teacher is teaching of sound design or game design or digital imaging. The teacher could still teach to those standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Good morning. Thank you for your time today. My name's Paul Lynn. I'm an assistant principal at Pelham High School. Formerly, I taught choir, show choir, general music, music technology, and for two random years, computer science. They were fulfilling. They were great. Deviation from my normal plan. And I wanted to say, music was always important to me. It was, it's because of music that brought me here today. And I'm honored to represent the music committee. So, next slide, please. So, our goals, the goals of the music committee were to promote music education at the highest standards. Standards are comparable to national and other state standards emphasizing the musical processes of planning, practice, preparation, and performance, and providing opportunities for music for every Alabama student. Our second goal was to create standards that are accessible and easy to reference for users of various backgrounds, including music teachers, school leaders, parents, and counselors. Lastly, based on feedback from music teachers across our state, our goal was to unify the various disciplines of music education, which is instrumental, vocal, composition, and theory, and to be consistent between the strands. Next slide. In alignment with our goals of making music accessible to every Alabama student, new course additions include continuing a general music course through high school with a full and half-credit option with appropriate standards for each. Previously, general music ended after the eighth grade. Our high school students who desire music education outside of the context of a performance-based class now have an opportunity. We also created a fundamentals of music industry course that includes coursework directed towards music industries beyond performance, such as music business and production. To increase readability and simplification, we've updated wording throughout the standards, changing the name of traditional and emerging ensembles to performing ensembles, which performing ensembles covers all performance-based classes such as marching band, jazz band, choir, and show choir. So, regardless of the type of performing group, the standards remain the same. The level of identifications were updated for ease of access. Middle school levels are one through three and identified by Arabic numerals, excuse me, whereas high school levels are one through four and differentiated from middle school by Roman numerals. All of the music standards were developed with the enduring understandings as a guide to further align the standards with our high expectations for music education and how music learning extends beyond the walls of the classroom. Now, I'll pass the presentation to Ms. Stevenson for theater.
Thank you. My name's Jamie Stevenson. I'm the theater teacher at Esteban Hills High School and the chapter director of the Alabama Educational Theater Association. So, I'm gonna talk to you today about theater. When we when we talk about the theater standards, the theater standards have been updated to address innovation and technical skills to empower our students with tools needed, not only for careers in the arts, but also a lifelong love of theater. The art of theater is at the core of the human experience. Before the beginning of recorded history, people used elements of theater to communicate and to understand and impact the world around them. In contemporary society, theater helps participants and audiences connect with ideas, groups, and individuals, and to understand their own emotions and actions. Our standards empower the student to create, perform, respond, and connect to the elements of theater. So, what's new? Ten years ago, we had a paradigm shift in how we created our standards. And we changed the standards of that time from a task-based to performance-based. So, as we worked this year to refine and polish the standards to work for students of the future, we provide four levels so that students and counselors can easily attain four years of theater training. Our four years, our four levels move from the introductory to accomplished. At the accomplished level, we want students to finish with a mastery of standards and knowledge needed for pre-professional performance. We will continue to cover technical theater, but have left them broad due to CTE adding technical theater as well in their latest course of study revision. We didn't want to overlap. We will continue to offer holistic technical theater with a focus on design and industry standards for college and career training. We also have four levels of technical theater versus their two levels. Standards were added that incorporate design and application. These standards can be utilized in areas of lighting, sound, scenic, costuming, and makeup. Also, our hope is that the class will inspire students to participate in all levels of theater and across the board. Theater has added a general studies half-credit and a full-credit option for those schools that have students who only need that one class for an arts credit. The half-credit option allows students to have a simplified version of theater, and the full-credit option is for those students that need an arts credit in theater and want a deeper knowledge in theater. Theater one, introductory courses, is a course that can be adapted to students who have had theater before or who have never had a theater class. Theater two level is an intermediate course to continue with theater skills while also building additional skills in performance and technical theater. Theater three, an advanced course to refine, create, and design at a level of performance that is able to demonstrate a strong progressive knowledge. And theater four, accomplished course, where students are able to synthesize learned knowledge to pre-professional performance. Our artistic processes is how we connect the theater, the art of theater, to our local, national, and worldwide community. We want to highlight perspectives that bring positive outcomes for the students of Alabama. Creating, building creativity through playwriting, design, and imagination. Performing, applying theatrical skills to informal and formal performance. Responding, learning how to appropriately analyze and critique performance. And connecting, how do we connect theater to our local, national, and worldwide community? Thank you so much. Any questions? Alright, and now visual arts. Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone. Now, you can tell visual arts is represented with red, so I had to wear my red today. I am the fine arts specialist for Montgomery Public Schools. I also served as a visual arts teacher for ten years prior to my new position. However, my most important job is mother to my five-year-old daughter, who attends public school here in Montgomery Public Schools. Throughout my life, the arts has been prevalent, whether in my academic or my personal life. And my desire is to not just provide that for my daughter, but for all students of Alabama. And so, that has been literally my lifelong goal, that they all have equitable opportunities within the visual arts or within the arts. Our visual art committee approached the standards with a focus on developing students' critical thinking, their problem-solving, and their teamwork skills while preparing them for college and future careers. Our standards emphasize a whole-rounded innovative curriculum that nurtures the whole student through engaging, collaborative, and world-wide experiences. We wanted to foster arts literacy while encouraging creativity. The visual art standards build students' confidence and ability to tackle challenges within academic and real-life application, while aligning the standards with college and career readiness standards. So, what is new with the visual arts? As you can see, we have one, because we had four levels from our last courses study. So, we currently still have it. But what is new is we have created a half-credit. And we're gonna be calling it the general visual arts half-credit course. The half-credit course benefits students by offering a creative outlet that enhances a well-being and builds skills with evaluation, critical thinking, and problem-solving. It will serve as a low-pressure introduction course while potentially sparking new interests for our students and connecting them with core disciplines. Overall, this course will support a well-rounded opportunity for students to gain a diverse perspective and a personal growth through exploration. Any questions for visual arts? That was not a lot, but we're still here.
Give me an example of the standards you just made.
Well, for us, when it comes to our standards, do you want one for the general half-credit course?
For the half-credit.
Okay. So, what we did was we looked at our level-one courses for high school, and we picked out half of the credits or half of the standards that we wanted them to touch on, because we wanted them to be well-rounded, and we wanted to make sure that we took from creating, producing, responding, and connecting. We didn't want people to choose only creating ones. We wanted it to be well-rounded. So, an example of one that we chose for the visual arts, I'm just not gonna go into the creating, because that's usually the first one. But but the one that we chose, let me go over. One of the ones that we chose was compare-and-contract methods for preserving and protecting art for presentation. So, not only is the creating side of the visual arts important, but understanding how we take care of it. Because again, with us having historical documents or having anything when it comes to the arts, understanding how to preserve it and protect it is one of the biggest things that we want our kids to understand. Another standard that we chose was describe ways of presenting work based on personal awareness of social, cultural, and political beliefs. And so, what we wanted to do was we wanted kids to think about what is happening in today and what's happening in the world around us, and how to be socially focusing on what's going on to better present the pieces. Because you don't just want to present pieces by putting it up on the wall. You want to have purpose. You want to have understanding. And that's going to allow them to think beyond just the canvas and the frame.
Well, that is all of our disciplines. You guys have any questions for us?
Just want to thank you for the layout. And I think what was very helpful when you had the slide and said what's new with each area, because we know that some things remain the same, but we were interested in what was changing. So, we appreciate that. Thank you.
I want to say that a long time ago, I was a visual arts student at Esteban Hills High School. I had an amazing teacher. It was the first art course I'd ever had, but I'd always loved art as a child. And she inspired me. I became an art teacher and taught for twenty-five years in the public schools in Alabama. So, I'm an example that this is wonderful and this works. Thank you so much for all the work that you've done.
Well, that's about perfect. You're pretty good.
We will break for lunch and come back at one o'clock. We'll come back at twelve-thirty. Twelve-thirty.
Twelve-thirty. 12:30.
Are you ready to get started?
Well, here we go again. When, at this time, our Geneva City Superintendent Ron Snell chaired the Social Studies Committee. When I saw recently he had announced his retirement, I called him immediately. Didn't even ask how he was. I said, "You gonna finish our project?"
And I answered, "I'm fine. Thank you for asking."
He did. He assured me that he was gonna land this project before he is gonna retire in a few weeks.
Actually, actually part of my decision for staying.
Thank you for doing that.
Thanks so much.
So, Ms. Snell, I'll turn it up. We got some folks coming in, so we give us, let them come in and be seated. Of course, if y'all know Blake Busman is our staff person that works on social studies. Again, huge project to land and glad to tell you they've worked so hard and have excellent, just like their presentation in library standards, excellent, excellent work. So, they're behind you. I don't know where Sean is, but he'll, he's here. He's on his way in. Dr. Shields is here. Same people working on all of our courses of study do amazing work. And I guess, you ready? You ready, Ms. Snell? I want to turn it over to you.
So, so good afternoon. It's such a pleasure to be here. I, I want to tell y'all, so it was, I was blessed growing up to, to work alongside Max Snell, who was my great-grandfather up into my twenties, then Millard Snell, who was my grandfather up into my forties, and my father, right there on the farm there in Geneva County until I was, until 2020 when he passed. And I, I tell you that because they, they taught me a life lesson and a principle that I've always held to, and that was that if your name is on it, then it better represent excellence. If your name is on it, then it better represent excellence. And this committee that I was a part of and got the, got the pleasure to be a part of, took that to heart. And I will tell you that if you spent any time at all with this document, you're going to recognize excellence. It's excellence in terms of scholarship. It's excellent in terms of its planning, its scope, its sequence, everything, every dot and tittle is taken care of and they have, and it's been weighed out. There is nothing that's just happenstance in this document. And a lot of that has to do with the way that we went about putting this document together. It was transparent from the beginning. It was responsive to input and it was truly collaborative. And the reason for that is because of our leader, and that is Dr. Blake Busman, who is in all things transparent. He is in all things responsive to input and he is in all things a collaborative at heart. And he is like a expectant mother right now. And I am not talking about his body shape. It's a machine and balls there. But he is ready to give birth to this thing and, and see it. And it's because of, of how hard we've worked, but also because of the real need to move and to, to adopt a course of study in 2024 since it has been so long. We're also joined, and, and, and this is the true, the reason that, that I just stayed on was because of my, the passion that the group of people that I, that I got to work with for a full year. And, and we grew really close. And I, I want to just ask those members that served on that committee to stand, please, if you would, just stand. And I'm gonna... Real superstars, and I'll talk a little bit more about them as, as we go. So, so thank you to them for making this such a pleasure, a challenge, but a pleasure. Joined up here by, by Marcia Farby, and they'll sort of say who they are, but that's Gaston City, and, and Mitch Pinkston from Baldwin County, Amber Broadhead. We're not, you're not in the order that I set you in, so this is, this is causing me some issue. And Ebony King from Deschler High School. So, and they'll each present a section of this, of this going forward. So, I want to begin just really, really quickly by showing you that I said it was, it was a very transparent process. And this, this is an effort to show you that this was a complete statewide effort. It's an attempt to ensure that this document is one that represents our state, our constituents, certainly this board, and of course, our educators around the state, something that they can be proud of. And so you can see the numbers, close to 200 educators applying to be part of the committee, 200 to be expert reviewers, organizations, just myriad of organizations from around the state sending letters and, and showing an interest. And I, this, this process to, from the very beginning, and I appreciate, I told you that, that, that Dr. Busman was, was always responsive. And I asked him, I said, "You know, when we come up there, rather than this thing being so impersonal, let's do field trips. Let's go places. Let's really build a team." And he got right on it, got us some of the best museums and, and a chance to really, came up with things like, like our tailgating. But what that, what that, what that guy was buying, and I don't think there was a day since January that this document wasn't open, tweaked, worked on. So, this is a true one-year-long effort. It's really, really been an amazing thing. Further, this is a supervisal, a supervisal for, for what we did. You can see on the, on the left, of course, you've got all of our higher ed friends that are either on the committee and/or have given us feedback, reviewed the document. And then on the right is a star of all of the committee members and expert reviewers. And what you'll see is you've got urban, you've got rural, you've got big, small, north, south, east, west, just a real open to the state. This is a true statewide document. I just wanted you to see that visual. Here's other organizations involved that, that all took part, either, either in responding to and/or giving feedback and/or also giving us some ideas. And nobody on this committee, again, a lot of it had to do with the way that, that Dr. Busman handled it, but we took every single response seriously. We dealt with every single response individually, often in writing. It was, so it was never just some words on a page. Every one of them were looked at, every one of them were dealt with. And that's from around, around the state. So, it's, it was a great experience for that. There they are. That's all the school districts. The thing that I would take away, I think that's most every letter in the alphabet. And I did not know there were that many Ts as far as school systems, but there are just a lot of Ts in our, in our city school. But you'll see that you can probably find your, several schools in each of your district right there on that screen. So, it, again, the whole idea of these last few slides is to let you know, this didn't happen in that room next door to us by ourselves. It came from higher ed, it came from museums. In fact, that was one of the really eye-opening things with some of the feedback. I got some from museum and state parks because they look at education so differently. The course of study and the standards are equally important to them, but from a different side of the desk, right? So, it was really, it was really intriguing to hear their perspective and to include it in this really great document. There is our committee, and with the exception, I guess, of the dude on the right, you are looking at a group that is smart, persistent, hardworking, and above all, very good-looking. Very good-looking. So, that's the thing you need to take away from that, again, except for Blake, I think we might, are we the only two awkward people up there?
No.
Okay. We're rocking the, it's all basketball, and that's from our tailgate party, so. So, my last, my last thing to show you before I turn it over to the real, the real superstars and the experts and let them take this thing home, is that is a, that is a visual of the new sequence. And I, I think it's, it's important to say that science underwent a tremendous shift from 2005 to 2015. English Language Arts did the same thing from 2016 to '21, and math has done it several times. 1994, this sequence has not changed. 1994, 2004, we still have many of the standards from 2004 in our, ready for this, 2010 current course of study. Our latest and greatest of, of this is the 2004 course of study. So, it is just, I don't, you know, this creates a logjam, obviously, as you try to get to the end of history, if you're still doing the same sequence. And so, this committee was, was locked in on that, how do we, what are some ways that we can address and fix that? And so, I thought it was, it was a good slide to be able to show you the shifts and, and how, how important it was and how much it was time to do. So, at that, at this point, I want to shift and, and hand the mic off to Marcia, and, and she will bring us to the next report.
Hi, I'm Marcia Farby. I am the Director of Curriculum Instruction from Gaston City Schools, that is District Six. And it has been just a great honor to serve on this committee, as Mr. Snell said, just the people, that just every time we met and the interaction and just all of the insight. So, the challenges, we actually had some challenges. I don't know if you'll bring up that slide. Those challenges started, you know, we, we have some things that we had to address because it's been so long since we've had a course of study in social studies where the sequence has changed. We actually started the work before we met in person, and that was by soliciting feedback and insight from educators of all levels across the state, from professional organizations, community organizations, from the public. So, our first two meetings, we were really diving deeply into that feedback. And as we started analyzing that, there were these themes that came up that we recognized we had to address those themes. One from educators most significantly was about time, that the way the current course of study is, our teachers said, "We don't have enough time to cover those standards in the depth that our students treat with me." So, that was one. Another was a request for more Alabama history. As you know, Alabama has a rich history. We have citizens who have made global impact. And to narrow that down to one course in elementary, our, our feedback said that's not enough. We really need to dive more deeply into Alabama history. The seventh grade course was a big course, is a big area of concern. Currently, we have seventh grade, two courses, geography and civics, each taught in a semester. We have feedback that said it needs to be all-year geography, all-year civics, or none at all. It caused some conflict with some counselors and with kids who went and transferred in and out. So, that became an issue we had to deal with. We also looked at lots of feedback on, "We don't cover enough modern history." So, that need, because the course of study was written so long ago that the modern history and the way the sequence was, we needed to look at how we could expand and cover that modern history in significant depth. There's also that greater alignment for connecting with our border states and the Department of Defense schools. We want to ensure that when our students are transferring, when they transfer in or when they transfer to another school, they don't have a gap in their history knowledge. And so, we needed to align a little more with that. You will see that there is a disconnect between the grade levels, and we needed more continuity in their social studies instruction. We have a great ranking with Fordham Institute, which does the social studies, but that ranking doesn't come without criticisms. Now, we have an A minus in history and civics, but even with that A minus, we were critiqued on our post-World War II standards because we're not covering modern history enough. We were critiqued on our civic standards, and while those standards were noted as being lofty and worthy, they're not realistic according to the Fordham Institute. And our discipline correlates all with our public feedback that said the same thing. And then our world history, Fordham Institute grades, that was a C. And so, really, those things guided us from the beginning, but we didn't stop looking at that feedback. As we're going through and developing new standards, we go back to feedback. Did we address this? As Mr. Snell said, we went through every single comment, and how can we address that to better meet the needs of our students? And so, that's what set the stage, was the feedback, the desire here to have that higher ranking and to meet the needs of our students. So, then we started our work with our standards.
Hi, I'm Ebony King. I'm from District Seven. I teach at Deschler High School, which is in Tuscon via City Schools. So, I want to talk to you about how we designed the document. When we got ready to write it, we wanted to think about, what do we want it to look like? What do we want to focus on? So, we want to create engaged citizens, responsible citizenship. So, what does that look like? So, we want to focus on the four key disciplines, which are civics, economics, geography, and history. We also wanted to make the document easier to read. So, as you go through it, we integrated color coding and icons, so you can find that civics connection, you can find that geographic connection without trying to figure out, is this a connection or is it not? It's easy. You can see it now. It's color coded and icons. We also, like Marcia mentioned, we wanted to place a greater focus on Alabama connections. So, you also can find the icon for the state of Alabama, so you know, hey, this is a connection. This is our role in this history because it's a great state and we want to focus on it. We also wanted to go more in-depth in a lot of topics. So, we again expanded a lot of the grade levels to where we hadn't been before. We also wanted to make it more specific and concise standards because some of our standards from teacher feedback were kind of vague. They were unsure what they were supposed to be teaching. So, now you know exactly what you're looking for, what we want the students to accomplish. Then we needed skills. So, what skills do students need to come out of this? Yes, we want to learn about history, but what else? So, we looked at economic thinking, civic thinking, geographic thinking, and historical thinking. And those skills are important when it comes to ACAP and the other standardized testing because with those skills, when we start building them at younger ages, it makes it easier for them when it comes to testing. They start reading new texts that they had never read before with primary and secondary documents. So, now we can build those skills and hopefully that'll improve scores.
Hello, I'm Amber Broadhead. I teach at Edgewood Elementary School, fourth grade per home and state schools. I'm representing District Four. I'm here to present the K through five standards today. So, with K through second, we're just expanding our communities, looking at the same standards and concepts, but we're developing our language and vocabulary in these grades. And like Ebony said, you know, we're focusing on the themes of geography, economics, civics, and history. In grades three through five, we're really looking at Alabama in American history. Our committee worked closely on expanding these standards amongst three grade levels, giving our students a more in-depth and fruitful experience, and that's our hope of the learning experience, everyone experience through this. It will also help alleviate unnecessary stress that our teachers have, as they have expressed, that they don't have enough time to do so. And through this, we are going to be recognizing vertical planning, which will also help eliminate redundancy in our standards. We also acknowledge that this will help align other states, as have Marcia stated before. And I know that you all are aware that we're gonna make, celebrating our 250th birthday for America, and so what better way than to acknowledge that Alabama is Alabama's importance One shift that we were looking at, also in depth of rigor, is the Civil Rights Movement, looking at it closely with 1950s, 1960s, and continuing on the depth of that.
So, that brings us to grade six, which is truly a bridge year because if you look across the state, we have schools that sixth grade is in elementary, sixth grade may be in intermediate, sixth grade may be a tree middle school or even in a secondary school. And as you listen to these early grades, it was very important for us with that, the expansion of the sequence to allow for that covering of modern history in the later grades. But we had to really be careful not to water down any standards and not to cut anything out. And we actually took great care into strengthening our standards instead of watering something down as we're creating these productive... down as we're creating these productive citizens for the future. So we look at Alabama through American history in the early grades, and in moving to grade six, this making of a new nation, now we need to bridge that historical thinking from that elementary to that secondary world. Before I mentioned, there was the challenge of the disconnect between grades. So we needed to have that connection where our history flows and we're building those seals. So we take for the sixth grade, this making a new nation, and take some of the current fifth grade standards and the current seventh grade standards and integrate those. Because we all know as we integrate learning, it is going to be more internalized than if we're teaching that in isolation. So this is looking at American history, the early years through a civics participation lens, embedding that learning. And we will start, the sixth grade starts covering those pre-contact years, leads to colonization, then to the revolution, the late 1700s, and then the election of 1800. But embedding those civic concepts throughout and providing a deeper understanding of America's government foundation that was laid in the elementary grades. So the other thing that is, is really neat about this is that we're focusing on contributions of different groups in those where our students start seeing that individual actions matter and the impact of that. And the civic concepts that we embedded are broad, but we include a lot on civic participation, individual rights, the religious freedom, and representative government. And this introduction at this level is going to lay that foundation for those later grades, for those civic concepts where our students start applying those concepts in that secondary, in those secondary courses. By giving that greater depth to colonial and founding years, that's going to later on allow that more modern history to be taught in those secondary subjects that, that we saw in the feedback as needed. So you will see that we're addressing those challenges that we were met with at the beginning. It also puts us more in line with those higher ranking states that you see on the Fordham Institute. And this focus on civics becomes more of active citizenship, participation, as Ebony mentioned earlier, that engaged citizenship. And this better pacing allows us to go into greater depth with our students and not surface level. Mr. Snell, if you'll show, there's an example, as you see on the left-hand side, what was covered with religion and the colonies and what's covered currently, like you'll see a standard that says recognizing how colonial development was influenced by the desire for religious freedom. Well, now what's highlighted, that change to describe the contributions of citizens in bringing about religious change in a colonial society. That idea of people affecting change, that individuals contribute to society for the common good, laying that foundation to then go into a deeper study at the secondary level.
All right, so grade seven through nine, we have changed a little bit. Again, one thing that feedback said was time. Currently, world history was eighth grade and ninth grade, and it was difficult for teachers to cover such a long time span in eighth grade, and then ninth grade was 1500 to present day, and that's a long time span in school. So a lot of teachers were like, there's just no way we can get there. So we definitely wanted to expand it. So again, grade seven now becomes the first half, and then where grade nine gets you into the modern half of world history. And hopefully that gives teachers the ability to go more in-depth with that topic. Also, we place a greater emphasis on other cultures also. So we get to see more African, Asian, indigenous, and Latin American history where we hadn't seen it before. But we increased the focus on Western civilization and how that leads to the founding of the U.S., how we base our government structure off of Western civil. So we didn't lose anything, we didn't, we just added, we went more in-depth. With the geography standards, we didn't lose that either. You get more geography standards now because in each grade level, we talk about geography. We're going from physical to political and other forms of geography. Then, as Marcia mentioned again, with the Fordham Institute ranking, we had a C with world history. And they suggested that we did expand to three world history courses, because that would better help the students learn world history than what we were before. It also aligns us with the neighboring states such as Georgia, Florida, and Tennessee. Then, middle school teachers were all kind of doing something different. Now, with the world history courses, you allow your middle school teachers to work together. We can also see with the expansion of world history to three courses, you can now have a better AP world history standard in grade nine, because they've kind of gotten the first half in seventh, eighth grade, and you can go more in-depth. So we, here's an example of what the 2010 standards is with the rise of authoritarianism and what we have, are proposing here for 2024. So before, we kind of glossed over some of the leaders. We talked about communism, we talked about the Holocaust, but we didn't really have time to go in-depth, because again, we're trying to get from 1500 to present day. So now, this standard is expanded, and you're able to go more in-depth in all of what the evils in the, of communism and what the Holocaust was like for many people.
Hi, my name is Mitch Pinkston. I'm with the Baldwin County Public School System in District One. And, and in that role, one of my main responsibilities as a secondary curriculum supervisor is overseeing social studies programs in our middle and high schools. And so today, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our high school courses that have been developed. But before I get into that, I just want to say, you know, from, from my seat where I see the students rise through these different courses, I feel like this document does a fantastic job of providing the continuity that we need for students to progress, both in skills and content knowledge. So, you know, I'll dive deeper, but, but that is something I wanted to put at the forefront is, you know, it is a very well-connected document that, that builds on itself and should produce some excellent citizens for our community. All right, jumping into grade 10. Grade 10 kind of jumps, jump front where Marcia left off with her sixth grade course. We're going to pick up with the roots of the American Revolution. So there's going to be a little bit of going back and kind of recovering some of the stuff with Marcia, but we feel like that's vitally important to cover the roots of the revolution, kind of how we got there and, and the impact it's had on us today. That's just so vitally important. We're going to go ahead in that course in 10th grade up through the progressive era. So around the year 1900 or so is where we're looking at the cutoff of that course. And that would be where US II, or the 11th grade U.S. history course begins. And that course will focus on America's rise to power, and then get into the world wars and, and move on. But the key aspect, I think, that we need to talk about with the U.S. History XI course is how we've been able to get to much more modern content. And I'll talk about that a little more in-depth in a minute. But that is something that I think we were all very proud of as a committee, that we were able to do. And the only reason we were able to get that vitally important, more recent content is because of the shifting we did in moving some of the stuff that was in US 10 to the sixth grade course. So I say that to say, you know, we, we didn't lose content, we just moved it a little bit to, to be able to get more modern history in there, which was, which was so important. I also want to touch on grade seven and eight, cover a lot of aspects too that were found in US 10. So again, it's not lost, it's just kind of moved. But again, going back to how I started this, with whole continuity, I think that our students have a better, you know, K through 12 experience as a result of some of the decisions that we have made. That covers most of that. The other thing I wanted to point out was the specificity of the standards. And this is true for the U.S. History course, but it's also true for all the courses. Something we found is that, well, the, well, the current standards that we utilize are aren't good, often they're vague. And, and we have so many new teachers, you've all heard it, right? How many, the teacher shortages and how we have difficulty. We need a document that can provide confidence for those new teachers, right, to be successful. And so our, our new standards that are outlined in this document are much more specific and much, do much more of outlining exactly what the teacher is supposed to teach and what we want the students to learn and know and be able to do. What I mentioned a lot was, you know, how we brought this U.S. History course much more into modern times. And so here's an example of this. Our, our previous standards, essentially, you know, it's, it's basically you get to the 1970s and then it's, and there's other history. Right? And it's like 1970s and then teach about the other stuff. And it's just not specific, it doesn't outline. The example that I give is, is where's 9/11, right? We, we need to have 9/11 in our standards, we need to talk about that, we need to, you know, have our students understand the significance of that event in the history of our nation. And so what you're going to find when you, when you review a little more in-depth these courses is you're going to see that, you know, the 1970s to the modern era is much more drawn out, much more specific. And we still do have a few open-ended standards towards the end, but they're much more specific. The reason we did leave a few open-ended standards near the end is because we understand that history is always growing, right? And so we wanted a little bit of opportunity for teachers to still add some history as it develops. Okay. That takes us to 12th grade. So 12th grade will remain a government and economics course, a semester of government and a semester of economics. The main focus on this was, the feedback we heard from teachers was that each course was seemingly written as a year-long course. And so government teachers were having trouble getting all of the government material in a semester without rushing through things, right? And same for the economics portion. And so the group that worked on the new standards for government and economics really put a focus on what are the most essential things that students need to know and be able to do? And I think they did a great job of putting those key things there that makes the course more manageable, that we can ensure students are leaving with the knowledge and skills to be successful and to be capable and active citizens as a result of the things they learn in those classes. That takes us to electives. So, so as you, and I'm very excited about electives, I'm going to talk further on this. So as you know, our, our students are required for four years of, of history. It's world, US I, US II, and government econ. We have so many students, and I've seen it in our, in all the schools in my, in my county, that are so interested in social studies, and they want to expand, they want to learn more. We have so many teachers that have a great deal of passion and a great deal of expertise that we wanted to provide these opportunities for students that want to go above and beyond to expand their social studies knowledge. They, they have more opportunities to, to just learn more. You know, currently our electives, we have contemporary world issues, human geography, psychology, and sociology. So students can take that above and beyond the required four core social studies courses. So we went ahead and updated those courses, and I think we did a fantastic job of updating those courses. Something else we did with those courses that was neat is right now, those courses can be taught as either a semester course or a year-long course. But it's kind of, no, no one's really sure with the standards, you know, if you go, what standard do you teach if you go half-year, which standards if you go full-year? So in this new course of study, we have clearly outlined, I'll use psychology as an example. If you teach psychology as a year-long, you do all the standards. If you teach it as a semester-long, you know, do the certain ones that are notified, that are notated as being for semester-long courses. So I think that's a key thing to point out that will be beneficial to our, our teachers as they teach those courses. But we also decided we wanted more. We wanted more opportunities, more course offerings for those students who have an interest. And so we added Alabama Studies, Historical Studies, and Holocaust Studies. Alabama Studies is basically a history of Alabama course, which I think a lot of our students would be very interested in, you know, throughout, it's a theme you've caught is we need a little more Alabama history in our standards, and this course would allow for students to expand their knowledge through that. Holocaust Studies, I think is, could be a fantastic opportunity for students, it engages students in that in-depth exploration of the Holocaust and all the context around it. So I think that is, that is a, would be a very meaningful course for our students. And then the final one is Historical Studies. And Historical Studies is more of a framework course. And this was purposely developed as a framework course because we understand that there's a lot of neat individual things that, that you could teach a whole course on. So for example, civil rights, right? We have a rich history here in Alabama of, of civil rights. So with the Historical Studies, what it is, it's a framework course, it focuses a lot on research, writing, that sort of thing, that you can apply to a variety of topics. So a school could offer Historical Studies of Civil Rights and then focus on that. Vietnam War is another example. Modern history, or, excuse me, not modern, local history, right? If there's something in your local area that is vitally important, you know, the Historical Studies provides a framework where teachers can provide that specific instruction for students where they're building skills while also getting that content. So I'm very excited about all of this. Again, K through 12, I think this is a rock-solid document that focuses on skills and content knowledge and produces, you know, students are going to be active citizens, knowledgeable citizens, and contributing citizens, which is our goal as social studies educators.
Oh, Hore, thank you so much for your, your time and attention. I, I hope it's become pretty apparent how passionate these educators are and, and how committed to, to, for Mac Millard and Cecil, they, they'd be proud of this group, and I'm proud to put my name on it, and I'm proud to put my name on it because of the work that they've done. And I hope that you'll be proud to put your name on this document. We certainly want to open up and, and see if you have any questions for us before we turn it over to the textbook group.
First of all, I'd like to just comment on the layout you have. You know, you outlay the four disciplines, I thought that was great, and the integrated approaches, you have the greater focus, standards, and the skills. I like the way at one point, Alabama history on the lower level was only taught in the fourth grade. But now you have third, fourth, and fifth, so they really get indoctrinated into our own history. The concern that I had had at one point, because we know, maybe about a year ago, we were talking about the critical race theory, was indeed if African-American history was being depicted the way it should be depicted in this document. So I, you know, reached out to some of my school districts, and I was informed along with Dr. Mackey about the comparison document, which showed that there were elements of African history at one point that were not even in our document, but that this committee has gone beyond to make sure that those things were included. So I just wanted you all, to really applaud you all for going beyond and looking at true history the way it is and not just the way we want it to be. That takes courage, takes strength, and it takes integrity. So thank you all so much, because we want our young boys and girls to know history for what it is, as I said, and not how we want it to be. So kudos off to the entire committee. Thank you.
And I just want to say, I got a lot of feedback on this whole area. But anyhow, I want to make sure somebody from that area was. Response to input was, and so guess what? As they were, input was, and I think I apologize that you stated that every single email or comment was addressed, either calling them or responding to them alleviated, just as yours were, any questions or, they just want to know what's going on and that their voice is being heard. So that is what I applaud you on, because that is not an easy road to travel. So I've got your, you've got your problem.
I appreciate that.
My homework person too.
I, I was going to say, I truly appreciate that you've added these additional courses. I think that's really, really important. Obviously, we've been stressing at this table for quite some time, the need for our students to be good writers, ability to communicate and write in the written word. And I think you've given them an opportunity through these courses to expand their writing. I particularly like that we have a course set aside for Holocaust Studies. I do believe that very often, that horrific set of events and period in our history is often not covered fully and in-depth, and I'm glad that students will have that opportunity to make that choice, maybe to study more about the Holocaust. So just want to thank you for those additional opportunities. I knew we already had good standards. You know, I read that Fordham Institute, I think it was a previous ranking that, that said, you know, in a nutshell, that we were doing a great job, but however, we were trying to cover too much in a short period of time. So you've been able to address that. So I just truly want to applaud you guys and, and say thank you so much for all your hard work for one whole year, on top of your regular work in the classroom. So really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just have three questions, and some of it relates back to what we had discussed before, and I do appreciate those pivotal discussions where you presented and we had an idea of where you were in the process at that time. And I've had questions again from my, many actually, of my constituents. One has to do with the reference to the form of government and how it is, how is it referred to now in the latest draft? That's my first question.
It has been updated to say constitutional republic.
Thank you. I thought it had been, having read through it. But I just wanted to make that clear for those that may be watching now. And then the, the next question has to do with the sequencing and where you stop with the presidents. And of course, there's a little bit of that in what we just, we And of course, there's a little bit of that in what we just, we were just presenting. Does it still stop before where we are now and where we were in the last four years? Which, since it's history, I, and we don't get to address it very often.
That's right.
We probably need to make sure that it is as up-to-date as possible, because I, my understanding was that you were leaving out a couple of years.
So, that's something that, as the committee, we talked about, is, is where is history and what serves with history and contemporary issues or contemporary events, right? Because truly in history, you have to have that little bit of time to give that historical analysis, to look at the big picture. And so, some of our standards, as I mentioned towards the end, are kind of open-ended, like, for example, one of them talks about national elections from 1992 to the present, where, where, you know, a teacher could, if they time lots, expand upon that. But that's the reason we didn't explicitly go up to modern day, is because we think it's important to keep that historical analysis or historical context piece that historians utilize.
Well, I'm looking at, and I don't watch a whole lot of this, but on the news, for example, where they do man-on-the-street-type interviews.
Sure.
And they ask an obvious question, who is the President of the United States? And they name someone you've never heard of, everyone. But that's what I'm concerned about, because we don't need to tell the whole world, we don't know who serves as the President.
Yeah.
Even if you don't like it, it's still the President of, President of the United States. Or if you love it, I mean, they still don't know who, they need to, they don't know certainly the Vice President, much less the President. And that's really, that's sad.
Yeah.
And so, that's where I have a big concern. And yet, the other issue has to do with geography, because that's another major problem. And when I was, you know, back in the Dark Ages in school, we had to fill out, they'd have the map of the United States. We had to draw the states in. This is in elementary school. Then we had to label it. And the next step was getting to know the capitals. And I can remember my parents spending a ton of time, and I'm glad they did, because we were blessed to travel a lot. And that helped, I'm sure, because that first one's parents. But not everyone has that opportunity to travel. And yet, they should be literate, in particular in the area. So, where is that? That's another question. And that's actually a personal concern.
Yes, ma'am. In terms of actually naming the President, the Mayor, the Governor, that begins as early as, I believe, Grade One. Grade One, when we talk about community leaders and you have that expanded community, it's, it is specifically identify your Mayor, identify your Governor, identify the President, and be able to differentiate between their roles. So, while there's not a specific standard to say on the 2024 election or 2020 election, in Grade 11, that one standard that Mitch cited does allow a teacher, they find that additional time to begin to discuss those elections. But we do have explicit standards throughout, like I mentioned, on the early grades, saying identify these individuals. And it would be inherent as well in talking about Grade 12 government, when you're talking about presidential roles and being able to discuss presidents and how they act, that would be part of that. In terms of your geography, you go actually, in Grade Four, what we saw was with Grade Four, currently Grade Four and Grade Five begin with geography. And we took those geography elements and built them into chronological portions within the Grade Three, Four, and Five. For example, identify the 13 colonies, identify the states up to the Civil War. Then, there's a standard that comes after that, identify the states and territories added post-Civil War. So, we take those geography elements and we embed them where they appear chronologically in history, which is a lot of the current social studies research suggests that geography works very well with students when they're integrated into historical studies. In addition, there are other geography elements in Grade Two and Grade Three, locating key regions, locating the physical features that define these regions, state, national monuments, the symbols, what those symbolize, et cetera.
Well, I know a lot of people, adults, still don't know that the Mississippi River goes all the way up to Minnesota.
Yes.
And so, from that standpoint, I'm, I'm pleased to hear that.
Yes.
But I do hope that it's reinforced. And the other part of that is, if they learn about their community leaders and the leaders in their country early on, to ensure that we continue that, because obviously, in 12 years, you'll have some changes. And that's where I think the disconnect has been, where they don't know and they don't keep up with it. And that's important. And so, it looks like, in here, do we end with President Obama, or is it beyond that?
That is included in the standard, but it says, to read the standard specifically, it's Grade 11, it's the very last standard.
The national election.
Yes. Describe the significance of national elections from 1992 to the present. So, it's telling people to begin, to begin.
Yes. And it would continue it.
Continue.
Because that's been a big concern, too, after watching our last discussion. But that's encouraging, and I do appreciate that. And I'm glad that you're focusing on the Holocaust Studies as well, because we don't need to repeat that ever again. And people don't, there are people who say it didn't happen, which is certainly not the case. But that's, that's encouraging. And I hope that's in every court, not just in the elective.
It's been added in World History Nine, as well as US History Eleven, which was not mandatory content prior. We made that a priority, to make that mandatory content this time.
And I like the way you all have left it open-ended, because you know, most of our testing now, we're testing our young people that way, so it just doesn't stop at a period. It has to continue, which means it will not stop.
Dr. Mackey, some questions for you. Some folks who may be listening today, or just starting to pay attention to what we're doing, parents, maybe even educators, I don't know, that may still have questions. How will they, because I think our period of communication and questioning is now closed. Is that correct?
So, the official is, we have, that was back in August, September, but if they still have questions, there are, I mean, multiple ways. One, just anybody who's listening and wants to write down, the general department open email is superintendent@alsd.edu. And if they'll send an email with that, those come in from all over and they get filtered out to the sections. So, superintendent, there are no A's in superintendent or cemetery. Superintendent@alsd.edu, and we'll, we'll get them to either Dr. Busman or Mr. Meadows if it's about arts. Now, they can also email them directly. You know, we have, get direct emails to, it's Blake.Busman, I think, at alsd.edu, and then Andy's is A Meadows@alsd.edu. But they can, they can send directly to them, they'll respond, but if they'll just go to that general superintendent email, those will get filtered out also. And we do encourage, of course, any questions that folks have.
Sure.
Between now and December.
Well, I think people have been paying attention more to what's happening in our national elected, election process, and they may not realize that we've been working, that the committee's been working on this. And just in a spirit of transparency, I want people to know how to, to get their questions answered.
I appreciate all the input that we have received, and you've listened, and you've incorporated the changes that, you know, people were, that they were concerned. And I very much appreciate that, and my constituents have expressed the same thing. And hopefully, they shared that as well. But they, it does make a difference, and it becomes our social studies courses, they're just, you know, telling them what is gonna be taught. They become a part of it, and it does make a huge difference, and you know that. So, thank you.
I think Mr. Stevens had something to add.
Dr. Mackey, just a reminder that actually, at the conclusion of this work session, we actually issued a press release listing additional comments from the public. So, there's still a mechanism for us to collect comments from the public. And that's consistent with each of our courses of study, so there's another mechanism where they can actually.
About 150 emails, pretty populated with over 400, 500 people, all the social studies teachers in the state, and now the latest grant.
We wanted you to say it first.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanna say thank you. I'll be honest, if I can be honest and transparent, I almost dreaded.
We weren't ready to.
I think, you know, as I went through the election process, this question came up in many of my counties, because people were concerned that Black history would be eliminated or watered down so that the truth would not be told. And I have to say that you all far exceeded my expectations. I was concerned, and I just wanna say thank you. I think what you've done is fair, and it's, it's a great document, that if you're really concerned about telling the story, you all have done that, and so, you should be commended. I had an opportunity to run into one of your committee members, I will not say her name, but this person was very opinionated, very. And for her to give the accolades that she gave with her experience working on your committee, I said, wow, it had to be. And so, I just wanna just applaud you and say thank you for the effort you put forth to make this document what it is.
Thank you. Thank you. It's really. Textbook committee, so I'm doing the.
Textbook committee.
I'm speaking. I am presenting the textbook committee report. I'll come down here so I can get close to the. Okay, let's see. Back and forth. Textbook. So, here we go. Let me make it. Shoot, my eyes are worse than Sean Stevens.
The arrows, Doctor Mackey.
The arrows.
Down, down.
There we go. Next. Okay. So, so, as y'all know, textbooks follow courses of study. This time last year, exactly this time last year, you were, you did, heard presentation from the science courses of study, and so, now, we're to the science textbook piece. So, what I'm gonna do, these slides just go through the process. You all have that infamous brown folder in your packet, right? Y'all ain't have those? Jason has those for you. So, let's go ahead and pass those out. As you know, those are off, they're, by law, they're confidential until voted on by the board. It used to be, and just remind y'all, we'll go through some slides here, but it used to be that it was confidential until the contracts with the textbook companies were signed by the governor, which of course caused, you know, even after they were voted on by the board, they were still sometimes weeks before we could let the public know. And so, so, we got that law changed, y'all advocated for that a few years ago, and we got that in peace, changed in the law. So, now, after, they're confidential today, but after your vote in December, they are, if they're approved, they become not confidential. If they're disapproved, by the way, they remain confidential. So, the State Textbook Committee duties, okay, might go, I've gone too far. Oh, thank you very much. Go back just a little bit, I'll start at the end. Okay. As you know, we have a group here, Carolyn Jones works on, as our textbook administrator, Carla McInnis is our science, K-12 chairperson for that committee, and Tracy Flowers been the career tech textbook. So, you have both. Science, of course, is the big one, and we'll, we'll talk about that in just a minute. For the adoption process, career tech education, we did arts, AV, and communication, were the three areas in that cluster, and then health science and human services. And then, of course, science is huge, 'cause it's all 13 grades. The textbook committee composition, this is laid out in the law, there are 23 members to each textbook committee. There are 14 members that come from the board, you appointed them last year, and then there are nine members appointed by the Governor and confirmed by the Senate. So, the general provisions, just remember that the textbook committee, they have a very specific rubric they have to follow. It provides lots of things for how these are laid out, and then, of course, contracts are awarded to multiple companies. So, then, the locals may choose, well, they may have two or three textbooks to choose for first-grade science, they may not have two or three, based on how the rubric came out. But we award contracts after you approve it to everybody who got on the top list, and then, they, it's up to districts to choose from whom they want to purchase. You know, there's also, so they review, the textbook committee, they review the books, they consider the merits of the books, and then they make recommendations to you. This is one, as you know, it comes straight from the textbook committee to the board. And we generally had pretty good, since y'all reorganized a few years ago, the rubric after the math. You know, math took us a long time to get approved. Y'all worked on the rubric, our folks worked to get that rubric right, and we've not had any real issues since then. There are, this is the one, I'm, it's the career tech, science comprehensive, you've got all this in there, I don't see a need to read it all to you, but I will remind you, this is the weird one, it's not weird, but I guess it is, that if we discuss it, outside of the confidentiality, it's actually a violation of the law, you or I could be fined up to $200, $300, $500, that's actually in the textbook law. So, we're always real cautious, that's why everything's marked confidential, and we don't actually ever load it into assembly, which we could, 'cause that's, that is confidential, but because we have a lot of other folks who, because of the setting up for meetings and all, lots of eyes go on that, so we just don't do it that way, at least not yet, until, you know, once it's approved, it's public. Okay, their guidelines for reviewing, they review and document all the evidence on a rating scale. They have to consider the quantity and quality of each indicator. They have to consider the evidence of high quality, as well as any evidence of low quality or lack of evidence. They do not consider provided examples to be exhaustive or restrictive. So, in other words, they, they, they can't possibly read every single word of every single book. So, they're looking at what's there, what's been provided, they do, they do go through the books, but again, they're not looking at every word of every book, they're choosing sections to try to look at it. So, it's not necessarily exhaustive or restrictive. And then, if evidence is lacking for an indicator, they flag it for further collection. There's components to the review form, section one is non-negotiables, those are things that every, they have to have. If they do not have these, they're not considered. Again, y'all will remember back from literacy discussion, there were textbook companies that were not even, like, they didn't even open their books and look at them, because they did not meet the non-negotiables. So, they had to meet the non-negotiables. Then, section two, are they aligned with our courses of study? The most recent one, obviously, for science and for the three career tech, there's actually five career tech areas, three of them are embedded, and then, the two others. Classroom application, so they can look further than just is it aligned to the standards, then, is it gonna be useful for a teacher to teach from this material? And then, section four is additional criteria of superior quality. That could be specific, and that could be something like the teacher materials, what materials are provided, in some cases, even professional development. Some of these companies offer professional development on how to use their materials. Mention that because especially in science, a lot of times, the materials are aligned to certain labs, and so, they provide some, sometimes professional development aligned to those, and then they get a final score. Okay, these are your definitions for getting, for ratings for sections three and four, exceeds expectations, meets expectations, partially meets expectations, or does not meet. Now, what you're gonna see in your packet are, of course, they're color-coded, but the ones that do not meet expectations, we do not recommend, and the ones that partially meet with. And so they provide some, sometimes professional development aligned to those, and then they get a final score. Okay, these are your definitions for getting, uh, for ratings for sections three and four. Exceeds expectations, meets expectations, partially meets expectations, or does not meet. Now what you're gonna see in your packet, um, are, are of course, they're color-coded. But the ones that do not meet expectations, we do not recommend. And the ones that partially meet with expectations, we also do not recommend. Am I right about that? Take that for granted. They have to meet the expectations or exceed them. It's a little different because we used to approve partially meets, but just with like an asterisk that you might wanna be careful about this. But that was something y'all wanted to, to tighten up. And then, so then they're in tiers. Tier ones exemplifies high quality there. That means they get 90 to 100 basically when the rubric's added up. Tier two is approaching quality of 75 to 89. And tier three is not representing quality of 74 or below. And we do tier one and tier two is what we, the committee, they come from, from me or the department. That's what's another, the recommendation comes to you from the, so the committee recommends you approve or purchase tiers one and two, but not tier three. And then of course, the ones, the fourth group would be the ones that didn't meet. They didn't meet the non-negotiables, so they're not even considered. Okay, so that's to the end of that. Now I'm gonna move back to my other seat, because it always makes me nervous, all these people sitting there. And if you'll open it, I'm not gonna read out the, um, the vendors. But you can look at, let's look at how it's laid out.
Yes, ma'am. I know I'm gonna be asked by my delegation in District Two, regarding the teaching of divisive concepts. And I realize that they can't, the committee cannot read every piece of text in every textbook. But did we, were we as careful as we could be in this process for that specific? Because that's, that's fairly new. I mean.
Yeah, right.
That terminology came after we developed this new process.
That's right. Um, I may let my instructional folks kind of address that. They obviously look for anything that's going to be. I'm gonna say biased. If it looks like it's biased, or there are, um, issues with it, then they're gonna flag those things because that comes under that second area. It may meet the standards, but is this going to be a, a useful tool for our teacher to teach the skill? So they are looking for those kinds of things, any kind of bias. Obviously, again, I'm not gonna say, and I'm always cautious about this, and I'm telling you, the two to me that are the most difficult are science. I taught science and social studies. It's coming next. Social studies standards, hundred and thousand percent. I think you've got great set of standards in front of you. I have no issues recommending them. This time next year, when you're looking at social studies textbooks, Lord, if they gave me a choice to be on the standards committee or textbook committee, I would take standards anytime, because we got those. Whereas textbooks, yeah, my textbook people are back here. I mean, they, the textbooks, you are interpreting what somebody else is reading. The standards, we write. Feel great? There's no question about that. Same way I stopped last year about the science standards. Felt absolutely amazing about them. Y'all all, it was unanimous, we passed that. But then you start looking at the books and how the books interpret and can be used for the standards, it's different. So I'm not saying, the, I can't say that nobody will ever find a picture or a phrase that they find objectionable. But as the committee went through, they did look for those biases that they, if they were, if they found a lot of that, they're gonna move, they're gonna move those out. If you, yes, ma'am, you're welcome. Um, so look at just page one on science. I'm, I'm, just make sure we're all on science. You'll see there, so we're starting with kindergarten. And, um, uh, sorry, this is a series. So the, the first one you see there has a blue. It's kindergarten through fifth, so they offer books for all of those. And you see it's blue, so blue means they are the highest quality. Then the one right below it is, um, green. But you see the material score is still an 85. So the committee says if it's, if it's between 75 and 85, 89, they still recommend that you approve it. But the districts will get the whole report. So they'll know which ones, which one's a 92 and which one's an 85. Now if I was a district person, then I'm gonna look at that and say, I, doesn't necessarily mean I'm going by the 92, but I'm gonna look, why was this other one an 85? And that company's gonna have to explain to me why, you know, what, why their materials not ranked as high. And maybe there's ways to supplement it, so, but you'll see there, um, that first company has two materials. And the next company, you see what theirs is ranked. So I'm, I'm just going through without mentioning any companies and trying to talk about the process, and you can see. You flip it to page two, and now you see some that are not recommended. They are, um, you know, the committee looked at those and did feel like, for, for some reason, that they didn't align to the standards, there was too much bias in the book. They didn't feel like they were, um, easy, easy to teach from. But for whatever reason, they ranked them, um, too low to be, uh, to be recommended. And you're gonna see that in all the way through. You see on the left-hand column, the textbook title, or the series, the title or if it's a series, you know. Some of them, it's the same title, but it's grade one, grade two, grade three. And then what grades they're submitting for. And you see over on the left, then the score, and then on the last column, is it comprehensive or supplemental? So pay attention to that too, please, because supplemental materials, we do not allow them to use those as their primary source for teaching. Okay, they're supplemental. They can be used, but they can't be the primary source if they are not comprehensive. That has been, it's not a, I don't, well, we have some legacy problems from years and years and years and years ago, where districts, uh, where that was not clear, and districts adopted supplemental materials and used them as their comprehensive material. We're no longer allowing that. Um, I will tell you, this, this time next year, you're gonna, we're gonna, as we do, social studies is one of those areas. Again, without naming a vendor, where when the old social studies textbooks were done in 2005, long time ago, but they allowed districts to use supplemental materials as comprehensive materials. So we're cleaning that up, and we've been telling districts and concerned, uh, citizens, some of whom Ms. Ziegler knows well, that when we, as we get through adopting new standards, we're fixing that. And that won't be allowed in the future. But I can't go back and change what was, what was done years ago. So, just notice that. If they say supplemental, if you look on page two, half the ones on there are supplemental, which means they are not recommended as a comprehensive core program. But they may be used as a supplemental resource in that, um, you know, in that, right, in that greater subject. Generally supplemental, not always, but generally that means they do not touch all the standards. So they're not, you know, if, and if I'm a chemistry teacher, I see one there is chemistry, then that, I don't want a supplemental book because, now I may use it as an extra, to supplement. But if that's the only book my district buys, then I know I'm not getting all the standards. So I gotta come up with other lessons though. Towards it's a comprehensive, then they have said this is, this is aligned to our Alabama standards. Our Publishers Warehouse folks are here. I'm gonna point them out because y'all know that in Alabama, we have a very special process, and I don't know how it goes. I guess other states have a process too. But our districts can purchase, instead of having to go to every textbook company and arrange their own deliveries and all, we have a textbook law, an additional textbook law that allows, uh, the clearinghouse to do, to, to like, do all of that for the districts. The districts do choose the books they want, but then they do all of the logistics for that. And, um, you can consolidate contracts and logistics and all that. So our two reps are here. They work closely with our schools. Y'all raise your hands so they'll know who you are. And, um, so I just mentioned that. They're not gonna talk about the standards. They're not gonna tell districts which textbook company they like better or don't like better. But if there are questions about logistics, they are the people who help us manage all the logistics. So, this is all, this brings me to the, what is, every year when we discuss textbooks, the weirdest place because we cannot discuss the packet in a way that it defies any of the vendors. What I would say is the best thing, take them with you. I just broke the seal on mine yesterday and started going through it. And then if you have questions about it, we can, um, you know, let's talk about them before December. Now, how this comes to you, again, is a recommendation from the textbook committee. Can you change the recommendation of the textbook committee? You can. I cannot amend it. The department cannot amend it. But if you can, but be cautious. If, you know, obviously if you said, you know, textbook line on line 17 gets a blue, but I want that textbook pulled off before the board votes. The only thing is, obviously, you could open yourself up to some liability because that, owners of that company are probably gonna come back and say, well, Dr. Mackey, why did you, you know, why did you do that? And if you got a good reason, you got a good reason. But just, let's be cautious about doing any discussion out. If you've got questions like that, you say, you know, I have a real concern about this book, then call us, because I'm gonna probably get one of the lawyers on the line with us, and, and Mr. Stevens or Dr. Shields, somebody from instruction, and we're gonna talk through it. But it is possible, but, but of course, you'd have to get the majority of the rest of the board to agree with you to do that. But, but it comes to you as a report. Now, see, I know y'all are looking askew, but you remember when you had those issues with math? People had real concerns, and we actually delayed the whole adoption. And came back, y'all did it like three months later, and we made some changes. Um, but we've changed the process since then. And I really hope we don't have to do that because, um, this is the most timely thing. They tell me this, because there's now a roadshow. And they call it the roadshow, where they go out and actually put the books on display, and teachers can come and look at the books. And then they have to order the books, and then get them shipped in, and then somebody has to, you know, this is still a manual process where somebody has to unbox those books. I can tell you, when I was a young man, a long time ago, one summer, that was my job in Calhoun County, to unbox textbooks and stamp them. Boxed to the Calhoun County Board of Education in red. I won't ever forget it. And then they had to be reboxed, because, you know, the boxes came in box of 50, but we had to send, you know, 120 to this school and 260 to that school. And so, all that's to say, we can't approve these in April, and anybody have their textbooks next year. They got, like, we gotta, that's, so that's why we bring it to you now, in hopes that you'll feel good about it and can approve it in December. Then they will start the process of the roadshow right after the first of the year, and districts can order their books then as early as, uh, February, if they want to, I think. They can go ahead and order them and get them in the, get them in the works so they're, they're being published. The, these contracts don't go through. The contracts with these textbook companies have a different process. They do not go through legislative contract review. They are, they had to be signed first by the textbook company. You vote on it. Once you approve it, then we send a t- contract to the textbook company. Because remember, the contract's not for purchase. The contracts that they will provide the book to the districts for a certain price, but we're not actually purchasing them. So they don't go through legislative review. They come back to us, go through legal, go through me, and then they go to the governor, go through her legal, and then have to be signed by the governor. So that's why, even though we're talking about books that won't be cracked maybe by a student till next August, we're doing it now because it's a law that has to be done between now and then. Okay.
Dr. Mackey, remind me, I know with the literacy textbooks, we had, um, some districts that decided to order what they chose to order. And so, I just want you to tell me on science, on this set, what will be our process? I presume we have some sort of coaching call or Zoom call with district level folks that, that says this has been adopted, and if you order a tier three.
So, there's a, they can't necessarily order a tier three. If they're rejected, they're rejected. Is that right, Sean?
Yes, sir. And just to remind the board, because of your leadership several years ago, not only were we able to update and make the process even more meaningful, but we've been working with Publishers Warehouse with our digital review portal that makes the, the information as far as the scores, comments, and things immediately available to our districts. That's something that's, was a game changer, and that, that came from you. Not only having the public be able to see, uh, the various samples of textbooks, you know, through the adoption process, but even be transparent with what the state textbook adoption committee and how they kinda help lead the local adoption committee. And just a reminder, at the end of the day, it's the local school districts, uh, adoption process that ultimately decides which titles that they choose. And having this ability to, to share the information that the state textbook committee within that portal with the locals, we think is something that'll make their selections more meaningful. Of course, it will eliminate a lot of downtime and, and delays, and then hopefully we can have the very, very best products in our schools. And that's all because of, they're willing us to work with us to have that.
So, and I remind, remember on the literacy, we had a very particular problem in that we had, um, two review processes. There was the textbook review process we're talking about today, but then also the literacy task force had reviewed. And when we looked at those two lists, and the first s- scores that came out, there was like maybe only one vendor or two vendors that, that got approved, too. And so, we did not, so we kinda just punted it to the districts. So then, now this is, and this is one reason, this is really, really important for us to approve the list. Because if we, if you were to say, you could as a board say, we're not gonna approve any of the textbooks. We're gonna leave it up to the districts. We're just not gonna act on this packet, leave it to the districts. Well, in that case, under the law, they can purchase a blue, a, a yellow book. Because if it has not been rejected by the state board, the local board can adopt it. But the law says if it has been rejected by the state board, the local board cannot consider it. So by your saying, we're, we're accepting this report and making official, then everything that you reject, the locals, it doesn't matter if they like that person or their uncle's a stockholder in that company. They cannot purchase something you have rejected. Now there is a process they could go through, but if there is a vendor out there somewhere that did not submit to the standard, and they want to submit to a local process, they can do that. But I would venture that any te- any reputable textbook company that wants to do business is in this packet. If, if they're in these, these, um, you know, these subjects. And we, yeah, we would be very, we wouldn't allow somebody just to come in and, like, they wrote their own textbook. That would be.
Just wanna make it.
Could be done, but that's a good question.
Clear.
Absolutely.
Um, on that, because I do know that some folks, you know, like to look for other vendors.
No, I appreciate it very much, but, and I appreciate it for the clarity of the board. And also, because y'all know, usually we have about 300 people listening to the meeting. And they need to hear the discussion. But let's say that somebody went to a conference in Seattle, and they found a different science, whatever, they wanted to, and it's not one of these. Well, they're gonna have to come back and prove to us that it meets all of the same rubric standards before they can, they can't just go say, oh, well, that's what we're gonna do. And then, you know, we'll, we'll watch for those. Don't think we'll have any issues with them, with the science. But that's a very good question.
And isn't there something, if it's not approved, that they cannot use state textbook money?
That's true. It's not approved. If it's disapproved by the board, then they cannot use their state textbook money on it, even if, the, the local board cannot even consider it. Right, if they don't. And y'all remember too, I know y'all, some of y'all probably like, I know I've got a, I know, I remember my marching orders. Remember that y'all asked for, and you got a special appropriation from the legislature this year. So we've had $75 per textbook forever, for a long time. And y'all asked for in your budget, an additional 75 because we were gonna be doing science textbooks, then followed by social studies, and the legislature did that. So we've got a bump up to one. and the legislature did that. So we've got a bump up to one fifty, or is it one twenty-five? One, one fifty. We got some in supplemental, some in the regular budget. But, and y'all have asked for one fifty this year. So that's double what they had two years ago to spend on textbooks. And we're, we're gonna try to keep that in. That's in your request that you just sent over last month. Okay, let's see. While I'm standing, ma'am, you want me to?
Keep going.
We're on.
Number five.
So five is the same thing. So I did science and arts together. So four and five's done. Six. We have six and seven. We have two schools that have been nominated as what we used to call national title one schools. It's now ESEA schools. And one is in Enterprise and the other one's in Marion County, Hamilton Elementary. So we'll recognize them next month. They will also be recognized at the National Federal Program Directors Conference coming up in somewhere out west, I think northwest, like maybe, maybe Seattle, actually. I just used that as an example. The, so we'll have those two. January twenty-five is Gifted Education Month. So we'll do a resolution in December for that month coming up. Dr. Goncalo, Jefferson County Superintendent is the twenty twenty-five amount of superintendent of the year, and so we'll do a resolution for him. He's planning on being here for the December meeting. Okay, board meeting dates and work for the date, meeting dates and work session for twenty twenty-five. Didn't hear back from anybody, so I assume those look good. This is the second Thursday every month, except for July. And then for the retreats, we put the last Wednesday of January and the last Wednesday of August, the same as we have done in the past. Here's a caveat to that though, that I would like to suggest. So in January, as you know, that you, you board, we're losing two of our board members here on either side of you, Ms. Ziegler.
I'd like to.
So we're gonna do, we're gonna do something very special for them, obviously, in January, which is their last meeting. And I'll remind y'all that it's, it's January, not December because our meeting's the second Thursday and inauguration day is the third Monday. So inauguration day will be the Monday after the board meeting. So we're gonna do something really nice for y'all in January. But then on that Monday, our, the two new members would come on. Since that is also federal inauguration day and it's a national holiday, Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, we are not gonna plan a ceremony here in Montgomery. Seems like that'd be very confusing. So what I am proposing is if we do the next Tuesday, the day before the retreat, we ask everybody to come in and do the ceremony. We'll try to get the old house chambers, sure we can, and do a swearing in ceremony, an official ceremony. Now, some of y'all I know are also working on local ceremonies and I've talked to Dr. Long and Ms. Mooney too about they're gonna probably do something local. But a, an official swearing in ceremony for, for our two re-elected board members and our two new board members in the old house chamber and then do a reception in the old archives room in the, in the Capitol. And then, so we did that on Tuesday afternoon and then we could let y'all go. We're, we're working on hotel and here in Montgomery area. But then go check in and then do dinner together so y'all can just have some time with the two new board members and then do the retreat the next morning. And I've been working with Dr. Chestnut on some retreat items and do it all here in the Montgomery area. Thinking ahead, I have, Ms. Ziegler and I have talked, as y'all know, we, we talked about going to Baldwin County in January and she wisely advised against that. Just a lot going on. We'll have this, two new board members. But possibly next August, bringing the board to Baldwin County for a retreat and being able to, or Baldwin County Mobile Area, the Bay Area, and then being able to go out and visit the new high school in Baldwin County, Baldwin Prep School that we keep talking so much about. So that'd give them a chance to get a whole year under their belt and be on it. It'll be kind of new and fresh school. So just thinking about that. But that means, of course, you know, that's really a couple of days. You gotta travel to Baldwin County to be ready.
But remember, we said they could stay for another few days at the beach.
Yep, we do it kind of at the end, stay at the beach, spend some money, go to Foley. So, so that's just kind of what we're thinking about, but y'all have to officially adopt a calendar. It can always be adjusted, but we do, we do like to go ahead and post it so the public knows what the calendar is. Any questions about the calendar? Does the retreat thing sound pretty good? Because I have Dr. Long and Ms. Mooney on hold. I've told both of them too, just pencil this in as the retreat date and then I'll follow up with you after, after I talk to the, you know, city board members.
And I know this is sort of rude to bring it up, but I don't remember. Do we, do we have little cards of, for invite, like to family and all, inviting them to our swearing?
I don't know if we have done that, but we can do that.
We've done it in the past.
We can do that.
Yeah, it was kind of generic. It wasn't just.
No, no, many, each individual, but it was an overall invitation.
It was sort of nice.
We will, we'd be glad to do that.
We were just turning back in and the department would send it in.
Correct.
Yeah, that'd be lovely.
We can do that. Thank you. It's, you know, that, y'all remember that the one, I know Dr. Chestnut and Ms. McCray won't forget it. But, you know, the four years ago was, was kind of a crazy one because we were in the middle of COVID and the Capitol was actually closed. We had to get special permission to get in and, so.
I went to the chamber, I went to.
You went to the.
You at the state Supreme Court and the chambers.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was really special, but it was obviously very special.
It was a. So we're, hopefully, no pandemics this year. We're gonna have.
I didn't even say that word.
We'll have a big ceremony. Okay, so then my updates, I did have a couple of things and I made some notes. These are pretty simple. But first of all, to let you know, let's see. Okay, I talked about the AASB delegate with some of you, but we're going, I think we got that worked out. And Ms. West is gonna go in. I'll submit your name and then that's gonna be six P M. before the AASB meeting, which is in Montgomery. I told one of you, I think I told Dr. Chestnut, I will make a true fifty-dollar bet that somebody will go to the Winfrey. It's been at the Winfrey for thirty years. And somebody will show up there and say, where's my convention? So hopefully they come early enough, they can drive down, they can.
They can go there.
The, and I would probably be the one. Do we have, do we have the other PowerPoint? Do I have a PowerPoint there as far as it? Yes.
Yes.
Let me pull that up. I'll come over there and do it. Okay, let me work my way back around. The report card is coming out. I don't think that's a secret anymore. So our state report card's coming out on November twenty-second at three o'clock. And I'm about to give you the state report card. So these won't be school level data. School level data are still being done right now, but they're, it's just it. No.
Inequal evidence.
Oh, yeah. Then I can do it.
Go down to presentation at the bottom.
Oh, thank you, somebody.
Over.
Oh.
Next to the plus minus, the little, all the way, that one.
Here? Oh, there we go. Now I see why Sean said he couldn't see it. Okay, so this is our state report card data. The individual school and district data will be loaded and ready on November twenty-second, three o'clock. Early because, you know, it has to be done by December thirty-first. But we try to always get it out before Thanksgiving. Y'all remember last year we did and we had three districts that had bad data and we had to, we can't, they all had to go at the same time. So, but we worked through early this year, the systemic problem that caused that to happen last year. So we didn't have any issues this year with data. And so they'll be, it'll be ready on time. So this is where we are statewide, academic achievement. It's the state federal report card. It was an eighty-five. You'll see of achievement, twenty points possible statewide again. Twelve point seven five was the total of academic growth, which is twenty-five points possible, which is twenty-four point two eight. That feels really good to me because that means that our students are hitting their growth targets at a phenomenal rate, even though our achievement statewide is still lagging some. And then, of course, these are the same test scores that I shared with you a few weeks ago. So the same data, it's just now in the report card form. Proficiency in English language, three, seven out of five is also pretty good. Chronic accentuation, eight point five out of ten. I think that's, it's actually better than a lot of people think it is. Graduation rate, twenty-seven, point oh one out of thirty. And then, of course, the CCR is, is eight, eight point four two out of ten. It's still going up, but there is still a gap between grad rate and college and career readiness. So the total state points earned for all the schools and states, eighty-four point six eight. The, the state report card looks pretty much the same. And y'all remember the legislature changed the marks on the state report card, but the only thing that changed was progress in English language proficiency. And, but you see, it's three, seven out of five, and it's three, seven out of five. So even in the change in the law, it's not enough of a difference statistically statewide that it makes any difference in the, it does at the bottom. So you see the total points earned on the state report card set up by the legislature is eighty-four point eight four. And on the federal, using the federal rules, it's eighty-four point six eight. I do point out that it takes a tremendous amount more human effort and money for us to produce two report cards. And I spoke out adamantly against it, that the legislature going to two report cards. But anyway, they went to two report cards and we got two, and that's it. Dr. Vanderford's back here and he does all this great work putting this together for us. So, so that's, that, it's, it's, I know what people really wanna see is the school level and district level data and it'll again be read on twenty-second. Now, if you want, I mean, hard copies or you want like PDF copies loaded into assembly, we could get them to you a little bit earlier than that. Probably not a lot earlier, but probably the day before that. But we're not, the public release we want to be that afternoon. So if you get them, if you please, just not share them. But if y'all want that, just say, hey, we'd like to have that. And what we'll run is your PDF copies and we'll load it into assembly and or get you a hard copy if you wanna do that.
I'd like a hard copy.
Hard copy?
Yeah.
Glad to. Yes, ma'am.
Just as a reminder, the districts are validating their data right now. They're within their two week validation period.
Yeah, they're not finished with it yet, but it'll be, even if they find problems at a district, and there could be, but it's not gonna be enough to affect that statewide score. It's just too many. You know, there are too many, the numbers game just doesn't work out that it would have a great effect. Okay, Dr. Chestnut, I think I'm finished talking, but any questions we've got?
I do have.
Just ask away.
One question, and it relates to what you have not been able to provide for us, and that is the district level. But are you finding, especially with the absentee truancy issue, is it the larger metropolitan or is it scattered out there? Because it looked like some areas were probably pretty strong in terms of attendance, but.
It's more than our, it's our inner city schools, metropolitan areas. Big cities are having the bigger problems with, like Montgomery. Birmingham's still, they're still having a hard time with attendance. It's less so, attendance seems to be less of an issue in the rural areas now than it was. We, we did have, have a statewide issue, but it's getting much better in most of the state. We're still having a hard time, especially our, our metro areas.
It seems to be getting worse in those areas and so much thankfully, so much better and where we used to, in the areas where we used to have those problems. But right now in Montgomery, that's been part of the problems, the problem, the problems in terms of the violence and the just big issues that, because they're younger and younger and younger.
I'll pull Montgomery's attendance. I can't, I can't speak for Montgomery's because I can't remember, but I know that in general, our larger cities have had more attendance problems.
And that's, yeah, that does make sense. And that's coming primarily from those in the trenches.
Right.
They were just seeing it. There's nothing scientific or, you know, the data is non-fiable, but they, they just.
Can't teach students if they're not at school, and if they're not at school, they're many times getting in trouble.
Exactly.
It's important. I'll, I'll look at that. We'll pull some attendance stuff and look, but yeah, that's pretty much the trend.
Do we have any other questions?
So the, I think Jason has an unproliferated on behalf, has some property for, on behalf of the. This is my evaluation data. I know y'all got, I don't know what y'all gotten back. I know you each did yours. So you don't have the, okay, so this is it then. This is the, the, everything added together. It's anonymized, so the comments are there. I, I got it yesterday and went through it. So I would say, I guess if you'll just take it, you wanna go through it, it will be on the December agenda because remember in December you have to vote. But it's really, it's actually a pretty good evaluation, so I prefer to say thank you all very much. And really good feedback, and I appreciate it is, and I appreciate the feedback. But the, what you vote on in December is not even, you're not, you're not saying you even agree with it. You're just solemnifying that an evaluation will be on December. We have to do that. So, so that'll be in, on the December agenda. But just take it and look at it. Most of you have, have talked to me about like what, like I knew before I even, I saw it, what you had said, because you talked to me about what your comments were, what your, how you felt about this section or that section. So I appreciate it very much. I'm already working on some things next year that will help us, you know, especially on the comments to, to address some of those things.
You're right. You did quite well in the composite score and then really in every category you.
Well, I'm trying. I'm getting there. Much more to do though. I thank you. There's much more to do. Okay.
You heard what I said.
We lost all of our crowds.
I heard what I said.
I didn't catch it in my school. Y'all were, y'all were troopers.
She's a good thing.